I start speaking through a microphone, my brain goes zero. Steve, do we wanna put that first?
Yeah, elected chairman now.
Okay, so, do we have papers?
Usually what we do here is just make a motion, someone makes a motion and someone seconded it.
Oh, very good. Make a motion, Holly be chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two to, I say herring, no nays. The gavel has been turned over to Holly.
Not even fair.
Yay!
Paybacks.
Paybags are a bitch.
I know. Alright, so, then, so then do I just start?
Sure.
Okay, I now call the August 4th Finance Committee meeting to an order at 6:30. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the claims.
Make a motion to approve the claims.
Second.
Councilmember Martin Canaan made a motion to, did I say that all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, to approve the claims, seconded by Kyle Larson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. Are there any claims to be reviewed?
I have two. My question is on Energy Labs water testing for about 21,000, and then Hawkins. My question is, is the water testing, are we, are we sending lab samples out to be tested, or are we testing them ourselves?
Your honor, the testing for the water treatment plant is contracted out for the most part. We do daily checks, but the major tests that we have to do to comply with the EQ and EPA regulations is contracted out.
Okay, and the Hawkins, is that, is that a, a part of, part of something other testing? I saw, there's several in there that I was wondering if it couldn't be grouped together. And, what was, how long ago did we get a bid on water testing?
Your honor, I couldn't answer that, I'd, I'd have to do a little research to see.
Because I know, I know, no, look, we have a water testing which is EPA certified, and they're able to take samples, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They're in our boundaries, and they use our sewer.
Yeah, your honor, I, I know, a couple years ago, we looked at that outfit, and there was, we, we did some price.
Comparisons?
Comparisons, and there were some things that they couldn't provide, there was others, and one, I believe out of Casper that we used, was able to do all of it, but...
I think precision analysis does everything that is required now.
And it may, yeah, it may be that they've expanded, so, that's something we can look at, because we need to look at bidding these out once in a while, just to make sure we're getting, being competitive.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, so then it's been moved and seconded, to pay the following bills. So then do I say these as well then, or do I just say this bottom part? Okay, consideration of bills to be paid in the amount of 131,040 payroll liabilities for 72415 in the amount of 467,769.02 manual checks in the amount of 806,046.20 for the total to be paid in 1,404,855.22. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. Stephen, do we have anything else?
Oh, your honor.
Okay, then I'd move to have the meeting adjourned.
Well, she gotta make a motion to adjourn it.
Okay, motion adjourned, or...
Second.
There you go, meeting adjourned.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for this opportunity to serve here in the city of Riverton, thankful for the willingness of council to help and to serve our citizens. Blessed is Father, this night that we might do and say the right things, that we might have love for all. Humbly we say this, name thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, your honor, Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
And Kyle Larson.
Here.
Woman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am here, and declare that we have a quorum, I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Bailey from tonight's meeting.
Your honor, I'll make the motion that we excuse Councilman Bailey.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Any amendments or anything like that to it? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Hi, my name's Kelly Carrico. It's, it's not on the agenda, is that alright?
Yes, yes, that's, this is, this is, this is what that is all about. If not on the agenda, you can come and talk to us.
Okay, I've made several phone calls in town, I've spoken to Kyle Butterfield, I do believe, about the, I work for CES, and the handicap parking in this town is deplorable. I mean, we have four handicap spots in all of downtown, and the movie theaters, which my clients frequent a lot, there are no handicap parking for them, and I've got people in wheelchairs and walkers, and it's when you got one person, me, trying to take four clients to the, you know, movie theater or whatever, it's really a hardship. The parade, the other day, we went to the parade, I did park behind Kuzel's Furniture, I think is what it's called, and we walked up, and there was a handicap parking spot on, on this, on the right-hand side of the road, and there was a person parked there that didn't have a handicap sticker. I was gonna take a picture of it, send it to the police, and then I got sidetracked and couldn't get it. But it's things like this that really need to be addressed, we need, is not, is it not a city ordinance, a place of business have X amount of handicap parking for their clients or their patrons? The movie theater has a parking lot over to the side, there was not one handicap designated handicap spot. There's three parking spots in front of the theater, none of them are for a handicap person. I could park my van there, get my four clients out, and be in and out so much easier if I had that ability. We have to go clear across the street, down the alley, park there, and then come all the way up, and when you got people in walkers and wheelchairs, it's not an easy feat, so. I am proposing that we get some more handicap parking.
Thank you. We can, we can, we can certainly look into that and, and try to figure it out, sometimes, you know, those of us who are not handicapped don't notice.
Exactly, and, and you've got such a huge population of handicap people in this town, huge, I mean, I work with them, I know how many people there, just the people in my line of business, and plus the other people in this town. My husband's handicapped, you know, and, and he has a hard time breathing, and we hardly ever go out because we cannot find handicap parking.
Okay, would you spell your last name for me?
C-A-R-R-I-C-O.
C-A-R-R-I-C-O, okay, and do you have a phone number?
Area code 904-704-9215.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Is there anyone else? Okay, consent agenda, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda by title, i- items by title only, please?
Yes, your honor, approval of the minutes, July 21st, 2015, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes, August 4th, 2015, Finance Committee meeting, approval of Finance Committee recommendations for August 4th, 2015, approval of replat of lots 2AA and 2AB Buffalo subdivision, Moss leasing petitioner, approval of County Platt Rivera Estates, Barbara Russo petitioner, Todd Polson developer.
Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your honor, Finance Committee approved the claims be paid for 131,040 payroll liabilities for 72415 in the amount of 467,769.02 manual checks in the amount of 806,046.20 for a total to be paid in the amount of 1,404,855.22.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Your honor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Appointment of Ron Warpness to the Force Committee, could we get a report from Public Works Director, please?
Yes, your honor, after a vacancy for several months on the Force Committee, the previous mayor, Ron Warpness, expressed interest in serving on that committee, and I believe he submitted an application or a letter of intent to you, your honor, and therefore we hope to fill this vacant spot, which has been advertised several times in the different news agencies in town, and we hope that we can fill this with Mr. Warpness.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to appoint Ron Warpness to the Force Committee?
Your honor, I would like to make a motion to appoint Romno, Rom, Ron Warpness, previous mayor to the Force Committee.
Second.
On seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Lease agreement, Pepe's Cafe at the Regional, Riverton Regional Airport, could we get a report from the city administrator?
Yes, your honor, as you know, back in May, the airport cafe closed its doors and terminated their lease, and staff went out and started to advertise for that, and we had one proposal from Pepe's Tacos, staff interviewed Pepe's and, and felt they would make a good fit for the airport. Currently, they're a catering vendor business that's organizes as sole proprietor and operates out of their home office located in St. Stevens. Staff has negotiated a lease that we feel is fair to all parties. I'm just gonna point out a few things as a part of the lease, it's an agreement for one year, cafe hours will begin at 6:00 a.m. with notification in concurrence by the city for the end of the business days, and that's just to provide some flexibility. With previous tenants, we had some pretty hard hours to meet, and a lot of times those hours were really slow, and it was hard to accommodate that, so we provided some flexibility there. The rent is a thousand a month, which includes utilities, one month's rent of a thousand dollars for a damage deposit, and then the city has the option to waive one month's rent in the event an agreement can be re- reached to perform cleanup operations to the open, which they will be doing. So it's our recommendation that we approve the lease agreement with Martin Gonzalez and Youfna Soldier-Wolff, doing business at Pepe's Cafe.
Thank you.
And, and Youfna and Martin are both here, if you have any questions for them.
Entertain a motion?
Your honor, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the airport lease to, to the people involved.
Second.
It moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Canaan.
I'm assuming the previous leasing then didn't clean that before she left?
That's correct.
I'm sorry?
That's correct.
So, she left owing the city money for rent, utilities, and plus didn't clean it when she left?
Yeah, your honor, I believe there was maybe some cleanup, but not much, and that's why we looked at this option to provide them some, a month's leeway and rent there so that they, they would clean it up and make it presentable so that we can start renting.
I guess I'll make another comment. That individual applied for the liquor license to load the city funds, kinda put the little stipulation that she had to pay up that before she was granted her liquor license, and I guess it would have been nice to know at that time also that she didn't fill the lease or didn't clean that restaurant before she departed, uh, 'cause again, I probably would have not put it for approval of a, of a liquor license, knowing that somebody leaves the city stuck in that type of a...
Your honor, at the time, we didn't, I mean, she was gonna clean it is what, so at the time when we brought it up, that we didn't know that it was gonna be in that state of situation.
Any, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, motion passes. The next item is the Forest Project Bid Award, North Broadway East Pershing Chip Seal Project. Public Works Directors report, please.
Thank you, your honor. At the March 3rd, 2015 City Council meeting, staff presented two force recommended chip seal projects for the council to approve. Council subsequently approved each of those projects and directed staff to prepare plans and advertise them for bid. Staff put together plans and specifications for the North Broadway East Pershing Chip Seal Project and advertised them for bid on July 12th and 19th of 2015. Five contractors and suppliers signed and downloaded bid packages, bids were received and opened July 30th, 2015 with the following results. Seventy-one Construction Incorporated of Riverton, Wyoming at 118,600. Dave's Asphalt Company of Riverton, Wyoming at 206,050. Staff reviewed the bids to assure that they were responsive, and as a result, staff recommends that the city council award this project to Seventy-one Construction Incorporated in the amount of 118,600. For budget impact, currently the 1% fund has a balance of approximately 2.8 million. After subtracting obligations for projects already approved, the fund has an available balance to date of approximately 1.3 million. And I've taken the liberty to combine each of the chip seals that were approved at that March 3rd council meeting. If each of those chip seal projects are approved tonight, we would then have an available balance in the 1% fund of 1,064,769 to date. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Okay, so for the Chip Seal Project, North Broadway East Pershing, the chair would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the chip sealing for North Broadway?
To Seventy-one Construction?
To Seventy-one Construction, I'm sorry.
Alright, second, been moved and seconded, any discussion? Tell me, I, I noticed looking at Pershing that it's kinda rough, is, the chip seal doesn't do anything to actually improve the travel surface, right?
Your honor, that is correct. The chip seal does not improve issues of rigibility when you have rutting, major asphalt problems. As a result, as part of this project, we have included patching areas, so that the areas of existing asphalt that are in states of disrepair will be patched prior to the chip seal going.
Okay, thank you, and then, and then is there striping? So, there was some painting goes on too?
Your honor, that is correct, included in this bid package is striping.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and motion passes. So now we've got a Forest Project Bid Award on Logan Park, East Logan Park Valley High Resurface Project, Public Works Director.
Thank you, your honor. Similar to the staff report that I just gave to you, this project was brought before the council at that same March 3rd, 2015 council meeting, and was approved by the council to advertise and prepare plans. It was advertised at the same time as the Broadway Pershing Chip Seal Project. Six contractors signed and uploaded bid packages, and bids were opened on July 30th with the following results. Seventy-one Construction Incorporated of Riverton, Wyoming at 145,110, and Dave's Asphalt Company of Riverton, Wyoming at 307,905. These bids were reviewed to ensure that they were responsive, as a result, the city, excuse me, staff recommends that the city council award this bid to Seventy-one Construction in the amount of 145,110. Again, the current 1% fund amount, about 2.8 million, if this project is approved, then our available fund balance to date would be a little over 1 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion?
Your honor, I'd make a motion that the city council award the North Broadway East Pershing Chip Seal Project to Seventy-one Construction Company. Second.
Your honor.
Been moved and seconded.
Should have been Logan Park East, Logan Park and Valley.
Logan, Logan Park, East Logan Park and Valley.
Excuse me, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I will still keep my second. Alright. Any discussion on that?
Your honor, I mean, just keep on seeing this, I see Seventy-one Construction at 145,000 and, and Dave's Asphalt at 307, and I'm going, and I'm dividing in my head, and I'm going, how could they have a bid package that'll, are they looking at the same documents? And Kyle has said that they've reviewed them, and then, I just...
And they're responsive, and, and I guess that always concerns me, when, when there's that much daylight between two bids, is that, is that the low bidder missed something?
Your honor, that is always a concern, that if there's a large gap, that the low bid will have missed something. We also have in this circumstance, situation where we're bidding these projects out late in the year, we did this because we've already bid out several jobs and know that we have a limited amount of contractors in town and couldn't overwhelm them at the start of the year. A possible explanation, I cannot speak to this as fact, but each of these contractors have heavy workloads at this time, and it's possible that one bid high, potentially because they weren't as hungry as the other one and...
Okay.
Had a full load.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The next item is Ordinance 15-007, third and final reading, setback requirements. Will the city clerk please read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, your honor, this is proposed ordinance number 15-007, third and final reading. An ordinance amending Title 17 zoning to revise Chapter 17.16 general requirements, adding section 17.16.080B to setback requirements, exceptions of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 15007 on third and final reading.
Your honor, I'll make the motion that we adopt ordinance number 15-007 on third and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Been moved in seconded, is there any discussion? Would you refresh our memory as to what that is? This is, this is for sheds, is that correct? Setback on sheds? Reducing it from five feet to one feet?
One feet.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we gotta have a roll call.
Oh, yeah.
Will the City Clerk please call a roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Martin Canaan.
Yes.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Yes.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Woman Holly Jibben.
Yes.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
Yes. I declare that the motion passed. Public hearing in consideration of Ordinance 15-008, first, um, reading, amending Title IX curfew. Could we get a report from the Chief of Police?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On October 12th, 2012, after three formal readings, the previous City Council changed Riverton Municipal Co- Code Number 12.24.010, which is the hours of public park operation. Uh, that ordinance closed all city parks at sundown. Under this ordinance, all publicly owned parks within the Riverton city limits are closed during hours of darkness unless there are organized activities like Little League. Enactment of this ordinance also altered Riverton Municipal Code Number 9.08.020, City Parks curfew, to reflect the new language. Recently, city staff discovered that Riverton Municipal Ordinance Number 9.16.020 Subsection B, uh, curfew had not been changed to reflect the new wording in 1224. That created a conflict between ordinances. Based on the City Council's previous actions, the wording in subsection B of 9.16.020 is not valid since newer ordinances negate language in conflict with them. However, in the interest of transparency in government, since this language was not changed contemporaneously with the enactment of the new park hours, staff felt it best to bring this issue before the council for a formal repeal. Unfortunately, in the sort of strange way of government, you have to actually adopt an ordinance to repeal an ordinance. So we would ask that you adopt City Ordinance 15-008, which would repeal subsection B of Riverton Municipal Code 12.24.010 curfew.
Thank you.
Standby. I'm sorry, I said that incorrectly. So it's subsection B of 9.16.020, which requires repealing.
Mr. Larson?
The, um, so, so it's unlawful for any person to be or remain in the city park of the city of Riverton at night after the hours of 12:00 midnight till 6:00 a.m. in the morning. Is that what we're saying?
No, sir, that was the old ordinance. The, uh, current ordinance is that parks are closed during hours of darkness. So when the sun goes down, parks are closed, and the sun comes up at dawn, then parks reopen to public use.
How's this going to affect the skate park?
Mr. Mayor, the skate park, we've had discussions with them, that should be open during the daytime as the rest of the park is. If they have some kind of lighting and they have organized activities, then it would fit the, the ordinance to allow them to be open, but just to have free skating after hours of darkness would, would not be lawful.
The, uh, let's open this public hearing and see if anybody has anything to say.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second. Been moved in seconded to open a public hearing. Um, is there any discussion on that? Other than what we've already had? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
Your Honor, seeing that no one's want to speak at the public hearing, I, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. The hearing is now closed. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 15-008 on first reading.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt, uh, Proposed Ordinance Number 15-008 on first reading.
Your Honor, we need to read it by title only.
Oh, do we?
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay, it's all right. You want to read it then? Says Chair would entertain a motion to adopt it on the first reading. Okay? All right, well, read the, read the ordinance.
Thank you, Your Honor. Proposed Ordinance Number 15-008. An ordinance amending Title IX, Public Peace, Morals and Welfare, to revise Chapter 9.16, Offenses By or Against Minors, by repealing such, Section 9.16.020B curfew, respectively, of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we, uh, uh, propose the order, pass, uh, Proposed Ordinance Number 15-008 on first reading.
Second.
Okay. Been moved in seconded, is there any discussion? Or have we had it?
Your Honor? Am I right then that it, the parks are closed after 6 o'clock or darkness?
Dark. It's dark.
Dark to light.
Yep, dark to dawn.
So do we have enough, do we have enough police forces to, to enforce that?
Well, it makes it, it makes it work. Uh, it, I mean, there's fewer hours in the wintertime and more hours in the summertime.
Right.
Okay. And, but after dark, the parks closed. So, and I assume that we make some kind of patrol that determines that they are in fact...
Your Honor, I, I just wanted to make a comment. That, that's been in effect since 2012, so that's what's on the books right now. They have been closed. It was just this language was still in the old code and it was, it was in conflict therewith. So we've been going off, the parks have been closed since 2012, um, when the sun goes down to when it rises.
Well, see now, I was throwing newspapers for four years, and I drove around that park after dark, and I don't see that we were doing a rigorous job of enforcing the law. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. And, and it's difficult to do that when you have the limited number of police force that were expecting to look at all the people that are exiting the bars at 2:00 in the morning and patrolling the parks at the same time because they're at opposite parts of the city. So that's, I'm, that's, I mean, why enact something you can't enforce?
Your Honor? I think, uh, the only thing is, is that we're enforcing this, we're just deleting something from this ordinance so that we can patrol the curfew hour for kids under 18 years of age, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. This, this curfew ordinance that we're talking about tonight really is addressing what time juveniles are allowed to be out, and there was a subsection that also addressed the parks. It really is pretty redundant since there are two other ordinances that also address that. Um, so this current ordinance under curfew and the language in the other two ordinances previous to 2012 was that all the parks were closed between midnight and 6:00. And so some of those issues that, that Councilman Larson is discussing have been in effect since the 1970s. Um, whether the park can be open at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, it's, it's been unlawful to be in the parks after those hours or decades, but, uh, we thought that the language actually was a lot more convenient to make it seasonally adjusted by darkness. It's a lot easier for officers to drive by and order everybody out of the park if necessary, um, you know, after dark as opposed to some arbitrary time.
Thank you. Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. The next item is a public hearing in consideration of Ordinance Number 15-009, first reading, rezoned lots 1 and 2, Block 6, Ryan Heights, 607 West Fremont, RRB Properties LLC petitioners. Could we get a report from the Community Development Director, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Um, these lots, uh, Lot 1 and 2 were reviewed for rezoning in 2012. They were recommended for rezoning at that time and had gone through three readings with council when the petitioner withdrew the rezon, request to rezon the property. As you said, this property is addressed at 607, uh, West Fremont Avenue. The parcel is on one, uh, both lots are on one warranty deed. A house exists on Lot 2 and Lot 1 is vacant. The petitioner has the parcel for sale, uh, as a residence, and it has been advised to request a change in zoning in order for the purchases to qualify for lower interest loans. The appraiser also was not comfortable appraising the property as residential since it is zone commercial. Uh, the petitioners are requesting a B residential zoning district, which is consistent with other properties along this street. All of the properties on both sides of West Fremont in this area are zone B residential district. Across the alley to the south of this property are properties that face West Main Street. These properties are zone commercial district C1. Notifications were sent to surrounding property owners and signs were posted. No comments were received from the notifications that were sent out. Lining Commission did hold a public hearing also and recommended approval of this rezon on July 23rd.
Thank you. Uh, the Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Hey, everyone. I am Kurt Gallitz with Home Source Realty, and I am, uh, representing RRB Properties. Uh, just wanted to address all of you. I believe Sandy very well summed up the, the request. This is the, uh, last step in the process for the property to be sold. Uh, obviously with a motion to approve, we can get forward, uh, we got a first time home buyer dying to, uh, close on his property very...
Thank you. Anybody else?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we, uh, close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved in seconded that we close the public hearing. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be closed. Um, so now do we need to read this ordinance by title only? Is this the appropriate moment? Okay, read the ordinance by title only, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor, this is Proposed Ordinance Number 15-009. An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the city of Riverton, Wyoming, designating the rezon of lots 1 and 2, Block 6, Ryan Heights addition to Riverton, Fremont County, Wyoming, from C1 commercial district to B residential district.
There, the Chair would entertain a motion to that effect.
Your Honor, I will make the motion to, uh, approve Ordinance Numbers 15-009 on first reading.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I, I guess I don't, my only concern is that it appears we're doing this strictly because we have an appraiser that quote feels uncomfortable appraising the property as residential since it's zone commercial and to an assistant individual to get a lower interest loan. And again, it, it kind of gives me the impression that we, we, again, we open ourselves up that the next time an individual needs a piece of property rezoned one way or the other to get the, a different loan rate. Again, it's, it's like having the sign down in, in city park. Once we open ourselves up to that, then how do you say no to the next individual? I guess that's my concern when I'm given those two reasons for the rezoning.
Your Honor, I, if I could take just a second with that, um, I, I understand Councilman Canaan's concern, and I guess in most cases that would probably apply. In this case, it's already in a residential neighborhood. It's surrounded by residential. It probably should never have went out of residential into commercial, but probably someone started a business there and then they made it commercial. But in other cases, I would probably, we would probably not be recommending approval for those if it's not consistent with the zoning around it. I, I don't believe we'd just be doing that just because they want us to do it. It would have to be consistent with what zoning would be around them.
And, sir, I understand, and, and I do agree. I mean, when, when, when you read it that the rest of the neighborhood is zoned that way, you've got this one little separate chunk, and, you know, I can understand going, making it consistent. We talked about that in a previous meeting about kind of taking the time to go back through our zoning ordinances and making it a little bit more consistent across the board. Again, that's my only concern is that, again, you know, when you give those types of reasons for zoning or for doing an action, and you kind of open yourself up to the next question when somebody comes in six months from now and says, "I want to do this," and you say no, and somebody says, "Well, you did it for them six months ago, why aren't you doing..." That's, that's my only concern, is that we don't open ourselves up to those types of
Mr. Larson?
Was there a business run there? I mean, why did they take all this time to take it from B to C and now back to B? Was it, what was the business and what was their thinking at the time? I mean, they must have had a real strong argument to look at all of the area and say, "It's all B and we're going to change this to C." What was the argument?
Your Honor, it was done quite some time ago, and I'm not really sure what the, um, what the business was, was there. Mr. Gallitz, do you possibly know?
Your Honor, um, the current business, uh, I don't know what the previous business was. The current business that was in the property was a, uh, drug testing facility, and it is, the, it is a two-bedroom, uh, one-bath home that was in the property. All they did was remove a bathroom for drug testing purposes. Uh, per our contract, uh, we did redo the bathroom to make it into a, a conforming bathroom for, for a home purchase. The best in use for this property, in, in my professional opinion, is a single-family residential home. It is the only, uh, commercial lot, uh, on the entire block. I, I do not know what the previous business was prior to the drug testing facility. I know that the only reason these people bought the property and, and stopped it from being rezoned is because they had a use for it as a, as a commercial lot. Our recommendation, even if it's not for this current buyer, there's going to be issues with new lending laws with trying to sell this as a residential home being zone commercial. So whether this current buyer can purchase the property or not, it is almost unsellable as a residential home being zone commercial.
Yes, thank you. I, I might speculate that it was a commercial property at the time it was zoned, and so then they gerrymandered the zoning because just across the alley would be commercial. So it'd be, the lots would be contiguous to commercial, but they, they gerrymandered it to match what was actually being used for at the time of the zoning. Okay, so then that reminds me of a time when I was on council many years ago and sat on the Planning Commission, and, uh, and we had somebody come in with a piece of property that if they could just get that zoned commercial from residential... they could just get that zoned commercial from residential, they had a buyer. And so we got, we got all the way to third reading. So it went through the planning commission, got all the way to the third reading. They came in and said on the last moment, King's X, "We've got it sold as a residence." And then about two months later, they were back. Well, the deal didn't go through as a residence, so now we need to rezone it back to commercial. Okay, I don't think that'll happen. Maybe, but I don't think that'll happen. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Okay, and, and so this is, this is, Mr. Gallitz, you understand this is first reading. Okay, gotta go two more times. All right, thank you. Thank you. Public hearing in consideration of ordinance number fifteen dash ten, first reading, street improvements. Could we get the public works director's report, please?
Yes, your honor. Purpose of chapter fifteen dot twenty of the Riverton Municipal Code is to provide minimum standards for the design and construction of building sites and land development projects within the city of Riverton. These standards promote the health, safety, and welfare of city residents and are enforced by the issuance of building permits. Pursuant to section fifteen dot twenty dot zero five zero, building permits are not issued unless an applicant agrees to install a number of offsite improvements adjacent to a parcel of land proposed to be developed. One of the required offsite improvements is to pave one half the width of an unpaved street contiguous to the tract of land proposed to be developed. At the June ninth, two thousand and fifteen work session of the city council, the requirement of paving one half the width of unpaved roads adjacent to a site proposed for development was explored. Specifically, the city council questioned the value of only requiring an applicant to pave half the width of a dedicated unpaved street. Motivated by a desire to increase the safety of the traveling public, avoid a patchwork of pavement development, and to protect the city from unexpected capital and maintenance costs, the city council directed staff to propose an amendment to section fifteen dot twenty dot zero five zero of the existing code. After discussing the issue at length, the city council felt that the code should be amending, amended, excuse me, to reflect the following. One, the one half paving requirement should be amended to allow for a minimum of two travel lanes. Two, the offsite pavement improvement requirement should extend beyond the limits of the tract of land to be developed, meaning an applicant would be required to pave a minimum of two lanes of travel from the nearest existing edge of pavement up to and through the property proposed to be improved. Three, a clause allowing for the recapture of upfront improvement, offsite improvement costs should be included in section fifteen dot twenty dot zero five zero in order to protect one applicant from having to bear the burden of paving the majority of an, of an unimproved corridor. With that direction, staff made the proposed amendment to this existing City of Riverton Municipal Code. In order to allow for the inclusion of a minimum of two travel lanes, staff amended section fifteen dot twenty dot zero five zero subsection A two to read, "The applicant agrees to pave the width of adjacent unpaved streets at a minimum of twenty-four feet, which is to include a twelve-foot travel lane opposite the center line." This change requires the applicant to not only pave a minimum of, minimum width of asphalt directly abutting their property, but to also accommodate for the safe passing of vehicles moving in opposite directions. Two, in order to require an applicant to pave outside the extremities of the property they propose to develop, staff included the following amendment to the existing code. It is found in section fifteen dot twenty dot zero five zero subsection B. It reads, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant may be required to pave unpaved streets outside the tract of land to be developed at a minimum width of twenty-four feet, including a twelve-foot travel lane opposite the center line, when such improvements are rationally related and proportionate to the impact of the proposed development. This pavement shall extend from the nearest existing edge of pavement up to and through the tract of land to be developed in order to provide a paved ingress and egress. It is important to note that per the above amendment, the requirement to pave outside the parcel of land to be improved must be rationally related and proportionate to the impact created by the proposed development." Staff also intentionally used the term "may" over the term "shall" in this proposed amendment so as not to make this a compulsory requirement in the city code of the applicant. Three, the City of Riverton Municipal Code currently only authorizes the administration of recapture agreements when pertaining to water and sewer improvements. As such, provisions needed to be added to fifteen twenty zero five zero of the existing code to enable the city to administer recapture agreements for street improvements. The city attorney has determined that Wyoming statute fifteen dash one dash one zero three gives the City of Riverton the ability to make this addition. Consequently, staff drafted the following amendment to allow for the recapture of upfront costs related to street improvements. It is also included in section fifteen dot twenty dot zero five zero subsection B and it reads, "The applicant may request an agreement with the city for reimbursement when future development application, excuse me, future development applicants are made along the improved area," I read that wrong, excuse me, "when future development applications are made along the improved area. Such agreements shall provide for a construction charge per square foot and if so collected by the city, shall be paid to the original installer as provided in the agreement. In no event shall the pavements described herein exceed the original installation cost of such pavement improvements. Any such agreement shall not include payments or collections for improvements made outside of the applicant's original improved area. The city shall promulgate procedures for such agreements and establish a fee to be paid to the city to cover administrative costs of such an agreement. An applicant's right to reimbursement shall not exceed ten years from the date of the, date of acceptance of the completed pavement unless a longer reimbursement period has been allowed by resolution of the governing body. All payments to the original installer shall cease at the time of, at the time specified in the written agreement for reimbursement regardless of the amount of money received by the original installer." The term proposed in this amendment for the recapture agreement is ten years. Since pavements generally have a lifespan of twenty years and dramatically depreciate at their half-life, staff believes the proposed ten-year term to be the most justifiable when developing recapture agreements. This is because the upfront investment of the original applicant will have already provided the majority of its value. The city attorney has reviewed and agreed with staff's proposal regarding the ten-year term limit. That being said, the city attorney mentioned the term limit would be up to the city council's discretion. However, he further advised that the council's decision should have a laws, excuse me, should have a logical basis for the time they choose. Included in the proposed amendment is a clause allowing the ten-year term to be extended by a resolution of the governing. Just to make that note. During the June ninth, two thousand and fifteen work session, delay agreements and improvement districts were explored as possible alternatives to requiring the immediate construction of offsite improvements. The existing code already allows for the use of these alternatives. As such, amendments were not required to be made in order to allow for the use of improvement districts or delay agreements. That being said, upon the review, excuse me, upon the review and recommendation of the city attorney, the following changes are proposed to be made to section fifteen dot twenty dot zero five zero subsection A two. It reads, "Provided however, the city may require the developer to enter into an improvement district agreement or establish an escrow account equal to one hundred fifteen percent the amount determined, the estimated cost for the installation of curbs, gutters, and street paving, when it is determined that a delay is appropriate prior to the commencement of the construction of these improvements." These changes are consistent with codes already listed in the municipal code and are consistent with the recommendation of the attorney and also with other codes that he has reviewed and worked on in his career. That concludes the amendments proposed by council to address the direction that we received at the work session on June ninth. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. The chairman entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be open. Hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Your honor, hearing no one coming up to speak, I propose that we close the public hearing.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. Any discussion there? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be closed. So could we hear the ordinance by title only?
Yes, your honor. This is proposed ordinance number fifteen dash zero one zero on first reading, an ordinance amending title fifteen, Buildings in Construction to Revise Chapter Fifteen Point Two Zero Development Project Approval Requirements, Section Fifteen Point Two Zero Point Zero Five Zero. Approval criteria for granting appeals of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number fifteen dash zero one zero on first reading.
Sir, I would move we adopt city ordinance number one five dash zero one zero on first reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adopt the ordinance. Is there any discussion? I have a question. Could you explain to me why we ask for a hundred and fifteen percent on the escrow account?
Your honor, my understanding of that is to cover any added costs. This is consistent and it was the recommendation of our attorney. I could go and look at further explanations as to why that recommendation is in place.
So if it was, if, if this project was delayed, could it be delayed five years?
Your honor, the current code does not have a timeframe on the delay agreement or any of the requirements for the improvement district.
So my concern is that, say that was delayed five years, the cost of putting in that asphalt might go way up. Well, it could be double depending on who the contractor was. But is that, okay, so that's the thought that strikes me is that, is that if we allow a delay agreement, then somehow I think the extra fifteen percent is to put some wiggle room in there in case this price is higher than what we expect it to be. But it may not go, it may not be, I guess what I'm trying to think is that fifteen percent may not be enough to cover it.
Your honor, most of the time I've seen, those are like administrative costs. I mean, typically the developer have been taking care of that and the city would be required to put that in if we had to exercise that. So the fifteen percent would be kind of an administrative cost. But it could be flexibility for that increase too, but that's pretty standard, a hundred and fifteen percent. I've seen that in a lot of-
Okay. And the difference between that escrow account and special improvement district? Would you, could you explain that?
Yes, your honor. The escrow account would cover the delay agreement and I would recommend that those only be entered into if we knew the timeframe wherein we would want to make those improvements. If it was ambiguous, that would be something I don't think staff would recommend. However, the option is, is in there if we knew a defined time period when we want to make that improvement. So the delay agreement is attached to that escrow. Special improvement district is something different altogether. That's where a special assessment is made upon the tracts of land, the owners of the tracts of land along that corridor. That can be made at any time. Generally, what we would do is as part of a development agreement, when those tracts of land are developed, we would put in that development agreement verbiage saying that in order to improve the pavement along this corridor, the developer agrees to participate in a special improvement district when it is created. That could be ten years, fifteen years, thirty years, depended on the need of the city and then basically need of the corridor. I mean, if it's going to develop quickly, that improvement district would happen relatively fast. However, if it's going to develop slowly, that would occur later in time.
Okay. Well, then I've got one more question. Okay, if, if we get, if we get this developer to build the road for us, okay, and there's a recapture, basically we're using his money to build the road, right? And at some later time when he's going to get that back, is there any consideration ever given for interest? In other words, his capital's been tied up. If he, if he took that capital and put it in the bank, you know, today he'd get three quarters of a percent interest, but, so that isn't a big deal, but there are times when the interest rate is higher.
Your honor, it only covers the cost by the developer to make that original improvement. I've talked to several municipalities who have explored the option of adding interest when doing recapture agreements and the response I got was it's very sticky legally. You cannot collect monies from a future developer and add interest upon them. You can only pay for the, you can only have them pay for the cost of the original improvement made by the original applicant.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Council committee reports and council members roundtable. We'll start with Ms. Gibbon.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay, Mr. Larson?
I have nothing, your honor.
Mr. Martinez?
I don't have anything either tonight either.
Mr. Canaan? Okay, that's a lot of business. We're still going to get out of here unless the city administrator's got a big report.
I do.
Okay.
Just wanted to let the council know and also the citizens know that we have some new welcome videos on our website. Quite a bit of time went in effort. You can see the mayor giving a welcome. There's a welcome from the mayor, quality of life, education, economic development, and community organizations. And these are all kind of, they came here and made videos of things here locally and it's mainly to give people that are potentially maybe wanting to relocate here or an opportunity to look at what Riverton has to offer. And I think they turned out pretty well. It didn't cost the city any money because there's banners on the side where the businesses put up money and that's where they, that's where they get the money. So they didn't cost the city only some time and effort to get that going. So I'd encourage you to go on the website. It's on the very front homepage. You'll just see a little thing that click, clicks up and it says videos and you can click on any of those and they're about a minute apiece. So they're pretty quick, but informational. Also, in regards to, right now we have one applicant for, for the council, Ward one. And that particular applicant is not going to be available on the eighteenth to interview. And so I guess in light of only having one applicant, I guess my recommendation would be to extend the deadline to Thursday, August twenty seventh at noon. And then interviews would take place on our regular scheduled meeting on September first. And so if you felt- And so if you felt, uh, that would be fine, then maybe just a motion to extend that deadline and then we can, uh, make that appropriation so more, people have more time to apply.
Thank you.
I got one other thing.
Go ahead.
Um, in the last couple of weeks, we've had a couple requests for stop signs, uh, requests. Um, right now, we don't really have a good criteria for why we put up stop signs. So what I don't want to have happen is we have people approaching the council, we have no criteria for the basis, and the loudest screamers get the stop signs. I think we really need to make sure that we have some criteria or a basis for why we put up stop signs 'cause oftentimes people think putting up stop signs will slow down traffic when really the facts prove otherwise. And so, um, staff is gonna develop some criteria that we can bring in front of council. Um, and then at that point, we can maybe address these requests that we've gotten for, um, stop signs. Thank you.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have one question. Should we, when was the, uh, the interviews, uh, what, what's the date on that? I know it's the first meeting in September, but.
September first.
First?
Thank you. Okay, um, mayor's comments, um, this Saturday on the eighth, there's gonna be a peace march, uh, from, uh, the Rotary Park on Adams down Main Street to City Park and then some talks. And, um, and so I will be participating in that. And, um, uh, and then, uh, the other i- issue that is facing us in the month of August is that, um, uh, Rosa Salamanca, who is a, uh, conciliation expert, I guess you'd say, with the Department of Justice, um, is trying to put together some, um, workshops for, uh, people in, um, in the city of Riverton and the tribes that we might, um, try to, I think, develop better lines of communication and a way to work on some of the issues that confront us. And, uh, so, uh, that process will be going on. And, um, it would be, I guess it's interesting, maybe we need to have Rick think about this, that if the entire council participated in this, would that constitute a quorum? And, and so then it would be a public meeting and we'd have to advertise that? Would that be, or, I mean, we're, we're going there as participants in something else, not as a meeting, to take some kind of action. Is that, but that still comes under that public.
Your Honor, I, I think it would. I think, just in thinking how Rick would think, but I, I, I can't say that, but.
There's more than three of us show up.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking that this would be an interesting exercise for everybody to participate in. Maybe we can rotate through some of these meetings or something so that, so that various members of the council have an opportunity to participate in, in one or two or, 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 maybe there's somebody that's really got a burning interest.
Your Honor, I can still check into it just to verify that. I know that he said, like, WHAM conventions, you don't have to obviously advertise. You could have the whole council go down for a WHAM thing.
Yes.
But it's more teaching, um, it, it's, they wanna avoid any sort of decisions or any commitment to the city. Um, if everybody's there, then established a commitment for the city and, and that wasn't in a public meeting. So that would be the issue.
Okay, all right. Mr. Martinez?
My recommendation would be that we get a hold of the, our city attorney and find out for sure. We can email us to say, yeah, it's, yay, it's an open meeting, or no, it's not an open meeting.
I, I guess maybe that would depend on how that meeting was organized, maybe. Well, he might be able to weigh in on that and give us a little idea how to pull that together. Um, so that, so that we could, because I, I think if we had fuller participation, we would have, um, a better outcome. Mr. Larson?
What are these burning issues that, that, that we need to work on so that we can work on them beforehand so that we are not so blindsided? Have any idea what, what burning issues we have?
Well, I, I think we do. I think we've got issues associated with housing discrimination. Okay, I think we have issues, uh, associated possibly with, uh, certainly the perception. Certainly an issue associated with the perception that law enforcement is more aggressively directed to Native Americans than it is to non-American people.
Well, my, my glove box wouldn't testify on that.
Well. Okay, so.
It's totally pink.
Okay, so, so we have a, um.
Those are the issues.
I think, I think among, uh, yeah, uh, those are, those are probably some of those issues that are, that are out there hanging, hanging loose. And, um, and then, uh, you know, certainly the tribes bring up some other things and we have an issue that, that we've been working with the tribes on now for a couple of years, and that's, uh, waterline easement from Airport Hill down to Rain Tree. And, uh, you know, I mean, there are some things that we ought to be able to work together on to accomplish. So, yes. Okay, so I think that's the purpose of that is to try to lay that out. Uh, on the other hand, I'm sure that, 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 you know, a large part, portion of this is that, uh, to make sure that the, uh, city administration and city council hears the complaints. Okay. So, we do not have a date, time, or place toward the end of August, okay? Uh, she says she would like to do four meetings and each of the four meetings has a simple, a slightly different approach. And toward the end, the idea is what solutions might we be able to hammer out that would make things different? Okay?
Your Honor, is, is there kind of a general consensus that we're fine with extending that date for the council? Council applicants?
For council applicants? Oh, I think so.
Okay.
We're, we're okay with that? Yeah, 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 I, I think, I, I, I don't expect we'll have any, anything that's just.
Your Honor, I, I noticed earlier you had, said that we had needed a motion for that?
I just, yeah, just something that I.
Did we do it? Do we, did, maybe we said it by motion before, huh?
Yes, we did.
Did we? Okay, well, let's have a motion that will extend, uh, applications through the twenty.
Twenty-seventh of the noon.
The twenty-seventh of June, of July, of.
August.
Of August, twenty-seventh of August, and interviews will be on September first.
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion to extend the council vacancy, uh, applications to August twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, and the interviews on September first, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Been moved and seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. We got anything else? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.